Alright, I'd like to welcome everybody to our City of Boardman City Council Workshop. At this time, I call this meeting to order and we'll do a flag salute please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, I think we have everybody uh. Keeper, yes, here.
Isaac.
Here.
Brenda.
Here.
Katie.
Here.
Junior is excellent.
Yeah, he's excuse for today. Alright, so we'll go right down to our general discussion. We have a presentation from Mike Lees.
Hello everyone.
Can you speak faster?
Alright, if I take my mask off.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll count you, Katie. Welcome.
Alright, well, my name is Mike Lees, we're for Mr. Perry and the purpose of the city. As an engineer and on many different aspects with many different agencies, so. The intent of this meeting tonight is to be educational and gives. I know there's a lot of new council members that may not be familiar with all the work the cities done in the past. And so I want to spend a little bit of time going over the past, you know, previous planning and construction documents to get people up to speed and also these past projects have a lot of relevance to what the city is doing now and also what the city is planning to do in the future. And so it'll also shed some light on hopefully why it takes so long to get some of these projects from conception to completion. And we'll go over a lot of the agencies that we have to to deal with and kind of the arena that we play in with with agencies and. There, so without further ado. We'll start with the water system master plan that was finished in August 2015. So the government agency is the Oregon Health Authority drinking water services. And they deal with anything water basically for municipalities. And so what the master plan does is evaluate the the needs of the water system over a 20 year period and are required for communities with more than three hundred water conditions. Master plans analyze the community's growth, water quality compliance, store water usage, system deficiencies, et cetera. It also looks at your water supply sources, your water rights, we can sense and emergency storage requirements, so your reservoirs and whatnot. And your distribution system needs, your O M M requirements, your budgets. It's it's a document that looks at your entire water system as a whole and how it functions. So also when you complete a water system master plan, you look at the improvements that are needed within a system and provide cost estimates and identify funding sources for those cost estimates. And so that's in a nutshell what a water system master plan does. And so what that does, it's also a mechanism to apply the funding sources throughout the state. So you have Business Organ, USDA, DQ, they're all funding sources. So in order for them to recognize an improvement as being legitimate, you have to have a large system master plan. So in the 2015 water system master master plan, the major improvements identified were in the within the distribution system. And so in 2018, the city ordered instruction projects to. Well, this this sheet has a better overview of the project. So. Just a quick overview of what was installed and then I'll I'll zoom in and go over each each portion individually, but. There was nine thousand five hundred feet of twenty four inch water lines installed and that started here at the water plant. There was a bore under Main Street. Came down along the railroad right away, went under the railroad right away, under the freeway and all the way out here to Flay- Phaler. And the importance of this lies with how the water system on the south side of the city was developed. So prior to this project, there was one eighteen inch water line coming across the freeway right here and that fed the whole southern portion of town. And it was a maintenance nightmare when you went to go isolate lines and tap into the lines. And it was also, it left the city vulnerable. If there was any, if there was ever a problem with that eighteen inch line, there was potential to lose service to the south side of town. And so that remedied that problem. And it also, so that was that was the twenty four inch line, there was twelve hundred feet of eighteen inch line, fourteen hundred feet of twelve inch line, eight thousand eight hundred feet of eight inch line, thirty seven dollars and twenty one fire irons. That's the water portion. And all those other water lines, the eighteen inch was right here, what that did was loop the system. So prior to this, there was a lot of dead end lines and that creates poor water quality. There's not circulation on that dead end lines and the way the city disinfected their waters to the coronation and so. You get a pouring pouring dissipates in your water lines if it's not circulated, so in turn you have poor water quality. So all those other water lines were installed to loop the system, improve your water quality. It also includes and improves your water pressures, so you have better. You have more water for emergency situations such as a fire. The other portion of the water lines that were installed were out here at War Lane. And so this this area of the city was incorporated back in, I believe, two thousand.
And it's nineteen ninety five.
Yeah, nineteen ninety five. And so. This project got water service out there. And that was one piece, we'll get into the other pieces later on regarding this area, but. The other piece of this project was constructing the Olson Road improvements. And this improved the access to the M C C, to the sage center by adding a turn lane and sidewalks. And the other thing that was accomplished was paving all of Phaler Road. Because it pretty much got demolished with all the water absorbed.
And the upgrades.
Yeah, so the other portion of this project was the sewer. There was six thousand three hundred feet of sewer line installed and that was to replace degrading sewer lines and also group flow through the area because it is a main artery for the south side of town that goes to the Station One. So there was seventy mammals installed, so the original contract price was two point two seven six million dollars. And with the change orders, the final contract price was two point eight six five million dollars. And should be noted that the Olson Road project utilized a small city allotment grant and those are funds distributed by ODOT for small cities, that's cities smaller than five thousand people. And so a hundred thousand dollars was provided by ODOT for that whole school project.
You know, I guess I would add just a minute here on the sewer project that we did on that on that at that time. We were having, there's only a couple three houses in Boardman that has basements. And that that's not a good idea in some parts of town and we were having a lot of trouble with backups into the basement, so. And so when we looked at the at the piping, we found that it was not adequate. And so we we chose when we were doing the water to take care of the problems in that part of town with the with the sewer. And it and since then, we've so far, we've been lucky, well, and then I think all the homes finally put in a a device so that they wouldn't get sewage coming back into the basements, so.
Yeah, some of the lines over here were steel lines and that's a big dodo. When you construct sewer lines, steel deteriorates from the gases created.
Well, and it it has to make, you know, you know, we don't do enough advertising about how how we do things that are good for the community, but to have it so that you have a redundant water supply on the south side, because when you really think about, most all of you live on the south side. That, you know, it could be days if if something would have happened to that. We were just always really lucky that, so.
And I I think we, if I was here when we made the decision to go this way and do that, and I can recall that Mark Robles had sat on the council at the time and he talked a lot about this, the the great need for the water pressure and the water demand if you had a fire and you were trying to really address a large fire on the south side. I know that was a big concern of his. And with with the hundred thousand that we got from the state, all the rest came from our savings, you know, account that we set money aside to do projects with, so, and. You should have Boardman on the back because not, there's not a lot of communities that can do a two million dollar project.
Well, I'm really hoping that in the future that we have start or able to with our new H R person, our new city recorder, we can start doing that, start getting information out so people actually know what's going on, so we can be, we can tutor a little bit so that it's not just a couple people that get on there and this, so that people can say we we can just get more information out there so they can say, now, that we're doing well, but then there's the other side. Hey, what are you gonna start doing next, which is not a bad thing too.
Well, and I I would like to put on record, at at the time, we saw some funding sources like Roosevelt and initiatives and some of those other companies that lend money to municipalities to help them do infrastructure projects. And at the same time, Stanfield and Hermiston were doing similar work in their town and they were passing ordinances or passing new rate hikes to meet those funding source requirements because they were requiring that they raise their rates to be more like fifty dollars a month or just your sewage, another fifty a month just for your water. So in our town, we're paying about, on average, fifty six to sixty dollars a month for water sewer trash. And those communities, they're paying like a hundred dollars just for water. And then an additional fee for sewer, an additional fee for trash. So we're very fortunate to keep our rates this low, one of the few cities in the state.
Well, the council in the last twenty years worked very hard to make sure we don't raise our rates.
Absolutely.
I mean. It's pretty nice to live in an area where you got cheap garbage. Because our city chooses to do that, it's pretty nice to have rates that we have right because our city chooses to help us to have those rates.
Okay, Mike, I'm done.
It's a good project.
So is that why you, I got a question about, did we ever finish, the last thing I heard about the water project was a problem going under the bridge to the railroad, did that ever get done?
Yeah, that was a portion of this project.
That was the, that was the added, I I just don't remember that yet, I'm sure it did.
The hangup was through the, so you, a large portion of that water line was within the Union Pacific.
Right, I remember that.
And Union Pacific really drug their feet on administering the agreement with the city. And then when they finally got around to doing it, it was like fifty thousand dollars more than they originally said it was gonna be, and so there was some pushback on the city. And I think it ended up being a hundred and twenty thousand for the permit just to install the water line. I think additional, or they came back with somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand they wanted, so. Just by pushing back this, you save thirty thousand dollars.
I just didn't, I just didn't get the second half of how it finished, so.
A lot of emails.
Yeah, thanks for our room.
Oh, they were the stops and loopers.
They were worse than deals in Congress.
And because they charge us by the square foot, is that what it was?
Well, there there was the original application here, the the right, the right to use, right to use their right of way. And then they required monitors twenty four, not twenty four seven, never worked with being performed in the right of way. And they had like two or three people employed that the city ended up having to pay for. Anyway, it was.
Let's move on to.
Yeah, we got, we got finished on that, that's good, thank you.
Okay, so the next, this is a planning document, this is a wastewater facility plan and it's governing agency is DQ and wastewater facilities plans are very similar in nature to a water system master plan. They look at current potential environmental and regulatory issues and assist DQ with reissuance of communities permit, so. This little sidebar, the city has a W P C F permit, it's a water pollution control facility permit, so. What that means is administered by the state or DQ and there is no discharge to water state, so. I think you're all aware that the city land buys all their wastewater, so it doesn't end up in a river. So wastewater facility plan evaluates wastewater flows, water quality data efficiencies, looking at the correct system. Again, makes projections on community growth, to size future improvements. And make capacity judgments, identifies improvement alternatives, cost estimates and those that are funding options for improvements. So we started the wastewater facilities plan and prepared draft submitted to DQ in two thousand and eighteen. Then DQ informed us that they were going to update the city's wastewater or W P C F permit. So the decision was made at that time, at that time to postpone finalizing wastewater facilities plan at least DQ. There's a lot of staff turnover within DQ and it's changed the, I guess, the dynamic of DQ there. They're checking the boxes no matter what nowadays and they're implementing a lot of new regulations and requirements on municipalities and really kind of just tightening the leash. So we postponed finalizing the wastewater facilities plan in case there was cost ramifications included in the W P C F permit. It took quite a while to get this thing finalized, we just finalized it in July twenty twenty one. But it's it's, I'll get into some more details on the facilities plan a little bit later, but in general, that's what a wastewater facilities plan is. Any questions?
It was really hard to do these because we're growing so fast and when they want you to project a twenty year, you know, what might happen in twenty years. We barely, well, the figures we put out were outdated before we got the plan finished. So, you know, I, I mean, we weren't quite visualizing the amount of growth we had.
Yeah, so I I ended up having to update the design criteria of the facilities plan three different times. And that changes everything in the whole facilities plan when it comes to cost estimates and sizing facilities. And then we had, we went rounds with DQ on the population projections because historically Boardman has grown at three percent per year. And there's an Oregon administrative rule that DQ abides by which requires municipality to use the population projections as published by P S U. And P S U has the city at a one point four percent per year growth rate. Was less than half, three percent, so that really influences when you're sizing facilities. The way you size your facilities, you take your per capita gallons per capita per day flow. Divide your current population by the amount flowing in each day, gallons per capita per day. And then what you do is multiply that gallons per capita per day by your future population projection and then out pops your flows. So obviously, if you're projecting a one point four or a three percent, that highly influences your population projections and hence your your facility sizes. We'll get into sizing when we start talking about the wastewater project that we're doing right now. Get into more how we're sizing projects and also how we're including some stuff in there. And it, so the design criteria we use for these, for the wastewater project, it meets the criteria of the wastewater facilities plan, but there's also some added capacity included in there, so we can talk about that later on. So moving right along, we have the the Boardman. The Collector Well Number Two, Riverbank Protection Project. And the importance here is, this is another agency that you're having to deal with, so in order to do any work with within a waterway, you're dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of State Lands. And they have their own sets of rules that you have to abide by. So what happened here was wave actions coupled with giver activity took out the bank protection, which was just this this toilet. These willows basically. And right here, you see the road fabrics and the pipe for the outlet to Collector Well Number Two is right over here. So it was almost impacting that outlet pipe. Couple more pictures, this is right by the outlet, the splash pad, I dare call it that. So it was really getting close to the fences. And again, here's some more erosion, so what we ended up doing is coming in and stabilizing or protecting the bank. So these are root balls at the end of a tree and those are twenty foot long trees that go back into the the bank. And it's covered with stream simulation material, otherwise known as rip route. And and then you have to mitigate, so. This part, the Department of State Lands requires if you're impacting a wetland, which you can see these, they're kind of like cattails, I can't remember the exact name.
Pampas grass.
Huh?
Pampas grass.
That is indicative of a wetland and I know it might be, sound kind of funny, that it's not surprising that there's a wetland along the shore of the Columbia River. But when you get further to the east on the Columbia River, it's just sandbars and that's not a wetland. If you enter the water and get below ordinary high water of the Columbia River, then that's a waterway, but it's not necessarily a wetland. So with this, with the protection project, we impacted this wetland, so we had to mitigate. And Department of State Lands requires you to monitor your mitigation for three years. Well, the the monitoring requirements are set by people on the east side, or excuse me, the west side. And so they get a lot more rain over there and so there's a herbaceous requirement, which is grass and then a planting requirement, so willows. And so there was a herbaceous requirement that you had to have six percent ground coverage. Well, it's it's sand and rock, so grass is not gonna grow. And there's not a lot of water either, so the whole planes were successful and then they were down into the the water zone. So they're thriving, but you couldn't get grass to grow. And so we worked with DSL and removed the herbaceous requirement and increased the whole planting requirement and survival rates. And and so we're moving towards getting that permit closed out, but they extended it for two more years. Just to make sure that the whole planes are successful.
Go ahead, don't count.
Uh, go heads don't count, cheap grass doesn't count.
Things that we have around here don't count.
Yeah. Got any needs?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Well, Public Works went down and put some willows fixed in the ground and got them to kind of take off there on that, on there.
There is that much erosion on the river, I guess I've never noticed there was that much erosion just from.
When 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 the water gets high, this time of year, they usually start running the pool elevation up about two or three feet. And if we get a big windstorm.
So is it mostly from wind?
It's mostly wind erosion.
Wind erosion that causes that?
Wave erosion from the wind. It was eight, ten years ago, we had the in front of the lodge between there and marker forty and it took out a whole bunch of the of the pathway.
I was just wondering how much of the river traffic, you know, people on the river, bar traffic, just things that that probably plays into the fact that most of it is probably just wind.
And and when the requirement to put the the root balls with the tree back in underneath, I was going, yeah, that's gonna work and I was wrong, it really does work. It it really knocks down wave action.
Cool.
Okay, next planning document we're gonna cover is the Water Management Conservation Plan. So we have a different governing agency, it's the Oregon Water Resource Department. And water system, water master conservation plans we use to demonstrate the community need for increased diversion of water. So this is also known as greenlit water and I'm gonna throw out a couple terms, greenlit being one of them. Perfecting is another one and I'll explain what they are, so. In nineteen seventy six, OWRD issued the water right to the city to appropriate withdrawal of thirty six C F S of water from the Columbia River. So thirty six C F S is roughly sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty seven gallons per minute. Roughly, 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 plus or minus. So the city has the water right, but they also have to prove that they need the water. So OWRD establishes development limitations on how much water right can be used based on need. So once, so I guess prior to Collector Well Number Two construction, the city had a diversion limitation of twelve point five one C F S. So that's five thousand six hundred and fourteen gallons. And that is, that equates to how much water can be pumped at Collector Well Number One. So since they can pump twelve point five one C F S, they partially perfected their water. Twelve point five one CFS, they partially perfected their water right for twelve point five one CFS. So the city is, was greenlit to use that amount of water. And then once they were able to prove to OWRD that they could pump that water and use it, it was perfected. Okay, so moving forward. The city submitted a water system or water management conservation plan in two thousand three after construction of collector well number two. And uh, OWRD authorized diversion of eighteen point seven CFS, which is eight thousand three hundred ninety-three gallons per minute. Which is consistent with how much water the booster pump station can pump. So although collector well and collector well number one and collector well number two together can. Supply more water than that, the city can only distribute eight thousand. Whatever I said, three hundred ninety-three gallons per minute because that's how much they could pump. So they perfected, the city then perfected eight point seven. Excuse me, eighteen point seven CFS of their water right. And this is important to note, um, moving into construction of collector well number three. And the construction of the new booster pump station.
Mike, is that with collector one, or is that just the pumps that all they can use to eight thousand? Pounds per square, whatever you said.
That's the capacity of the booster pump station. So collector well number one and collector well number two.
Can put out thirteen thousand, so the booster pump station can only pump out eight CFS.
Correct.
Okay, remember when I keep telling you that I've got lots of water going into the building, but I only have a twenty inch pipe going out? And I don't care how much water I can bring in, twenty inches is all I can take away. So with two bolt booster pumps running. I've got more water than I can produce to the outside, that's part of the reason we want to do this new upgrade. Is so that we can. I just wanna make sure I understood.
Yeah. And so in two thousand seventeen, the city submitted another management conservation plan to OWRD. And OWRD greenlit the full water right, thirty-six CFS.
And that was a big deal, yes, I mean, not, I mean, because I don't know how this works. But everybody else was really impressed with it, and they said, oh, green light, good job.
And so now it's the city's position to make the improvements to the distribution and the supply system with construction of collector well three. And the new booster pump station so they can perfect their full water right. And perfecting the water right is really important because each year, or not each year, periodically you have to. Uh, sub- submit a permit extension, so water right permit extension. And it's getting more and more difficult to, to get extensions. And so hence the importance, not only for the community's sake of. Being able to distribute that, but also to protect their water right, so nobody can ever touch their water right, ever. From here on out. So. We can talk about the design criteria, the, we'll talk about the design criteria of the, the improvement projects for the water system in a little bit. Anyway, that's, that's, this water management conservation plan was huge for the city and getting greenlit on the, the whole one right.
That's when I called in all my favors from everybody, like the board and the fire department and everybody. Let's go down and turn all the water on in Boardman.
We're in local still did it too.
And we'll be doing that again when we get collector three ready to go.
And that's to see how much pressure you can have when everything's all.
No, it's to prove that I can pump and I, that I can pump that amount of water and use it. They don't come out and look to see that I just run it on the ground. But that I'm actually pumping it and using it, and that's what you have to prove, so.
And, and the improvements we've made on the water system from previously. Go a long way to being able to distribute that water at a rate that will take us to certificate level. Uh, because we'll have the ability to move it around all through the system because of what we did.
We don't have to keep a pressure, you just have to show that you can pump it.
Yeah, to keep pressure, but it's the ball, it's the volumetric portion of it.
Oh, the volume part that we're proving, not the pressure part.
Right.
Gotcha.
All right, moving on to the GIS system.
Okay.
I don't have a slide for the GIS system, but I just. It would be more uh, effective to show you what the GIS system is. Uh, because, so GIS is a tool and it can be applied on many different levels. At face value, it's a map. Um, but it's a map with many different layers of information. So for example.
So do you have a picture of what the actual probe in the computer business looks like?
The.
Well, that thing.
The RTK.
Yeah.
I, I don't, well, actually, there is a picture, I can pull it up.
Well, I think they need to understand what that.
Is a GIS like the computer, the computer part? I don't know what GIS is.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get you to tell.
Geographical information system?
Computer?
Is it satellite?
Uh, yeah, it's GPS.
And there's special topography for people or something.
So the city implemented GIS a couple years ago in nineteen, or excuse me, yeah, nineteen. And. That is for a couple reasons, it's a great tool, and then it's also to download all the information. That say in Mary's brain. Kevin's brain, and get it somewhere that's uh, usable for the public or staff. That's, that's one of the reasons, the second reason is for operation maintenance standpoint, so. What you see here is all the manholes, oh, sorry, I got the shit.
Like Google it and I found out what. It's a system that maps.
Yes.
An information system mapping technology. So it's a system that tells, just maps and sort of progress type thing. But I forget what this is.
I want an expert.
Oh, I have no experience, I was just trying, I didn't like computer, but, or is it a program?
Yeah.
A system is the word they, they use.
So the city has a, so Esri is like the platform, or they are the owners of all these GIS systems. They, they hold all the information for the city.
That makes sense.
The city just accesses that information, downloads the stuff to, to Esri, and then it becomes available to operators and ourselves. Uh, and in order to get the information into that system, you can either input it by hand, like on just. The operators can download an app on their phone. Or the city has a iPad that they bring around, and then you can put information, take pictures, and it's tied to certain aspects. Um, so what you see is there, is the city's wastewater system. And the manholes, all the little flowers are manholes. And they're down to the centimeter actually as far as the location. So if there's two feet of snow in orbit and you have a sewer plug somewhere. Um, the operators don't have to go kick snow around, they can use their instruments to go find that thing within minutes. The other. Part of this is that it's always stored, so this manhole right here. The city staff around the whole city have located all the manholes and shot one of their RTK units. And also took pictures. So you can see all the ground disturbance around this manhole, this thing was buried. Well, if it ever gets buried again, they know exactly where to find it. The other, the cool thing about this is that you can, there's different attributes within here, so. Scroll down, you see it's got some pictures, here's the coordinates of that manhole. But the guys can also put in other information such as the depth to the invert. So the depth to the flow line. And that's useful in cases, you know, they're going out to a manhole and it's twenty feet deep, they're gonna need to bring a ladder. Um, and some of that knowledge you just learn in overtime by operating the system. But if you have new staff turnover, this is a great tool for them to use. To save time and money. Take a look at the water system, so the one thing to note, the city staff were around and collected all GPS coordinates of the sewer system. But our system is basically. Lines on the map, they don't have coordinates associated with the, the valves or fire hydrants. It is a large task, um. It just takes time. To get this information input into the system. So the way this map was generated, we provided all the record drawings to our GIS staff. And then they basically overlay that within the system and try to match their locations as well as they could. But again, if you go to a fire hydrant. It's, it could be here, it could be over here, it's not one percent accurate.
Hopefully that very.
Our, our group's generally all.
Typically, that's true.
If they are, they're, but the city gets notified.
I was trying to.
The other one.
Only found one that was happening.
The other one, and it's, I think, I think it's more important in the water than say sewer, is the operation maintenance of the water system. So there's periodic maintenance within the water system that needs to happen, such as exercising the valves. Exercising valves should be done twice a year. And you can see all those X marks are all the valves within the city. There's a lot of valves. And then also you need to flush fire hydrants. So what the operators can do within the GIS system. Is when they're flushing out fire hydrant, they can say fire hydrant flushed on such and such date. Or the valves were. Exercised on such and such date, and then what you can do is uh, do a query search within the system. And it'll pop out how many valves and the dates that they were exercised. So you say, okay, this portion of town hasn't had a valve exercised in two years, you better go wait that down. So that's how it's very useful on the water and wastewater side, it's also useful from a planning side and. And that you can click on. Any one of these, and it'll tell you the tax law information. Uh, the size. Who owns it, et cetera. And so if you need to do public notifications, you can set um. Parameters on, you can click the tax law and set parameters on how wide of a swath you need to notify people. And then it'll pull up all those people within this attribute table, and you can print it off. And then you already have all the addresses to send out notifications. Let's, I mean, Mary can tell you how long it takes to do it the hard way.
Some of the simple ones, they're only get about fifteen minutes, but some of them take me an hour or better.
So you can.
Out all the lots within two hundred and fifty feet.
So I touched on like a real high level stuff that you can input, it, it's the information that you can put in here is endless. And it's available to basically, not anybody, but. You can set viewing access to just about anybody in the city. You can, like the city of Hermiston has their GIS system up on their website. So anybody within the community can go to their, their website and look at the GIS system. See all the water lines, manholes, et cetera. Any questions on GIS? Okay, so the next thing we're gonna talk about is the city's recycle water use plan, and this is tied to the WPCF permit. Governing agency is DEQ. So recycled water refers to the beneficial, beneficial use of treated wastewater. The wastewater treatment classification governs the beneficial use. The city is permitted to land apply classy wastewater at circle fifty-two. And the crops grown can be used for cattle feed and water, so you have alfalfa, corn, trachalia are the main. Crops that are grown out there, primarily it's alfalfa. Uh, DEQ regulates the use of recycled water in a manner that protects public health and the environment. And the recycled water use plan identifies the method, methods, procedures, restrictions, treatment, monitoring requirements for recycled water use. Uh, the DEQ required that the city update the recycled water use plan prior to updating the PCF permit. Because there's a lot of overlap between the two in regards to water quality and how it's treated and land applied. This, the key, okay, so the city, city's WPCF permit expired in two thousand and six. So from two thousand and six until the permit was recently updated or reissued in twenty twenty. The city was operating on a permit extension. But it took fourteen years for DEQ to update permit.
Was there? They had lots of staff.
Fourteen years, that's exactly what I was thinking too.
No, no, seriously, I would go to meetings where DEQ was at, and so. I would say, hey, are y'all working on that? There you go. We're working on it, getting right on it, and another two years or perhaps.
So the, the other interesting thing about the old permit. And the old recycled water use plan was, it, it stems from when the city started land applying on circle fifty-two. So the city bought that from the Port Marlow. And the Port Marlow continued operating. Circle fifty-two as they had in the past, except they were just land applying wastewater. And so it made sense at that time to include a chapter in the, in the Port's recycle water use plan that included the city's requirements. DEQ didn't like that anymore. Um, because it makes sense, there was a lot of. There was inconsistencies between the city's permit, the WPCF permit, and the Port's WPCF permit. Because they have industrial water and the city's doing sewage, so. That was the goal of, of uh, DEQ was to separate the roles and responsibilities uh, around circle fifty-two. And so now it, the city's full responsibility to do all the monitoring, reporting, and, and such at circle fifty-two. And so the recycled water use plan identified all those requirements. And then excerpts of the recycled water use plan were put into the WPCF permit. So there was consistency amongst the two documents.
Then the wind blew and we didn't need to land apply.
Did you say that the city almost set circle, or?
Yes.
They do now, okay.
They have since two thousand?
Um.
No. I was looking at Mary.
So who, um, who's land applying against the city, or does the port land apply as well?
Prior to updating the recycle water use plan, it was a mixed use circle before it applied. Prior to updating the recycle water use plan, it was a mixed use circle before applied industrial water, sea applied wastewater. And then they supplemented with well water as well. After issuance of the recycle water use plan, the Port ceased applying industrial water.
On Circle 52?
On Circle 52. And it comes down, I think it's a reporting nightmare for the Board. I'm making some assumptions here. But they have a huge network of land application sites. And when you try and isolate just one, I think it was too much work, I don't know.
Do they, who manages the farming on that property then?
There's an agreement between the Port Tomorrow and the city to manage, not just, well, the city manages, the city works jointly with the Port Tomorrow to land apply wastewater as needed. The, the city basically has a first right of refusal to apply wastewater on that site. And then the Board manages, I think, so Farmer Bob. Farmer Bob manages the irrigation activities otherwise. And then also coordinates with the farmer on harvest time. And then the city, so that's like the farming activities that go on the application of water. City also is contracted with IRZ to adhere to the requirements of the recycle water use plan, which is soil monitoring, soil moisture monitoring. The, they take soil samples and test it for certain parameters such as land traits at different depths within the soil, make sure it's adherent to the water. Recycle water use plan.
Are there monitoring wells out there?
There are monitoring wells for the Port Tomorrow. And we'll get into the city's groundwater monitoring plan.
So my question on that is who?
I think Ferguson Farms is the one that leases the ground.
Okay, then they can keep and own everything that they harvest off of that.
We don't make that deal.
Okay, you just lease the ground and they can manage it for the farm side as they wish, in compliance with the water rules.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Next thing we'll talk about is the city's standard drawings and specifications. So what these are is, is they set the rules for developers when they're coming into orbit. And they help developers in designing and constructing the infrastructure. So similar to way, to the way that, you know, when I go and design a water project, I have to abide by the rules of the state. It is the same for developers, they still have to abide by the rules of the state, but each municipality, each city is different in how they want more things done. So some cities like Riving Curve, some cities like Roll Curve, and there are about a dozen different ways you can do a curve better in sidewalk. So these city standards kind of set, make it consistent for all the developers, and they like that. So there's no question. The other thing is you have developers from across the United States that are designing these developments within orbit. So they can get on the city's website and look what the city's standards are and already know what their curve better in sidewalks go like. It also makes the materials used in construction consistent. And it gives them, it gives them guides on the means and methods of construction. So it is also consistent with state rules. Just for example, the city of Hermiston only uses duct lined water lines. That's, that's their standard, and all contractors have to abide by that. In Hermiston or in orbit, they can use duct lined if they want, or they can use C900 EPC. Both are approved by the state, they're both good products. It's just the city of Hermiston prefers to use duct lined.
So. And Mike's point about having it on the website, it's been a godsend for me dealing with engineers and developers from all over, literally all over the country. And I can direct them to the website, direct them to, to the standards and specifications. Jackie, you've got it on about three different pages. You can go on the page, the public works page, and I think it's on that. If there's one other page that she knows. And so it's been a whole lot easier when both of us are looking at somebody from Florida, North Dakota, and Borden, Oregon, and set and look at the same drawing and the same specifications. This makes it work a whole lot easier.
It also makes it a lot more efficient to review a set of development plans. Because you get, when you become familiar with the city's standards, and you can roll through a set of development plans and mark them up relatively quickly and say, no, refer to the standard drawing ST12 for a lot. These are the monuments that are gonna be installed in the city and that's where you're gonna go into. So makes it consistent, and it's a lot of, a big time saver for the city. The next project is the Columbia Avenue roadway improvements. The project being here is the asphalt surface between, on Columbia Avenue between Main Street and Olson was degrading. And I've got some photos, some before photos. There was a lot of surface longitudinal, longitudinal and lateral cracks within the asphalt. Again, here's another big crack, and then this is called alligatoring. It's basically where just the asphalt is coming apart. And once it gets to this stage, there's, there's not much you can do but to replace it fully. So after review of the roads, we went out there, walked the road a couple times. And we tried to identify the spot where the road was good enough that we could save it. And again, bad enough where it was have to be a full road reconstruction. And so the line in the sand was 900 feet, basically from Olson, Columbia, 900 feet to the, to the west there from Carius.
I was wondering who did that. I remember that I didn't realize the city did that.
The, the original intent was to chip seal, chip seal the whole thing. And we'll get into some pricing here, but chip sealing is a lot more economical on your checkbook than full road reconstruction. But like I said, this, this area, it was too far deteriorated. There was multiple different, there was differing layers of asphalt.
One of the county did it.
Well, it was interesting enough, then when we demoed this section of the roadway, the, the base of the road was basically river gobbles. Big river gobbles, and that's not the ideal use, or that's not the ideal base for a road because it's subject to movement. And hence why you have so much alligators.
Why they called back more?
Yeah, pretty much.
How long has it been since we did this?
Uh, the project was finished in August of 2020.
Yeah, it was just last year they did it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking that so we could do that.
Yeah, it was all tore up last year. I just remembered because it was at Rex Center, you could say that.
I'm, I'm the damn.
Oh. It's nice.
So the, the project cost was roughly $330,000. Again, the city utilized the small city allotment grant for that project. So they can go up for around a thousand dollars. And a breakdown of costs, so like I said, 900 feet was fully reconstructed. And 3,440 feet was a double shot chip seal. A double shot chip seals, where you go out, go through and put a, an oil, oil mat, and then you put rock on top of it. And for a double mat, you go with like a half inch rock, and then you go with a smaller rock to kind of fill the voids. So we did a double shot chip seal. Of the $330,000 budget cost, the road reconstruction was $260,000 of that. And the chip seal was $7,000. So that's $290 a foot for road reconstruction versus $20 a foot for chip seal. So it's important to note, like, when your streets are deteriorating throughout town, it's much cheaper to try and get up front of that before they start deteriorating to the point where you have to deal with a rear road reconstruction. And then it also shows that chip seals, it's an economical way to make improvements to your roads. Now, the full road reconstruction, that thing's gonna be there. And I'll be long retired before that thing gets any attention, other than general operations, general maintenance. Asphalt is a hard surface, it's gonna crack eventually. So that's where the city goes through and crack seals all out of the streets within town. But that road has 12 inches of three quarter inch minus gravel compacted, and then three inches of asphalt. So that thing's gonna be there a long time, and it's, it's way better constructed than what was originally constructed. And I don't know how long that asphalt lasted, but that 900 feet's gonna be there for a while.
If I picked up one of the gobbles, it looks like a petrified potato.
Okay, moving along. So these next four items are compliance related to the city's new WPCF permit. So the city's new WPCF permit became effective in March 2020. And within the permit came, contained a compliance schedule. And it included these four items, the lagoon leak testing, the primary lagoon sludge survey, the emergency response and location plan, and the groundwater monitoring plan. In order to talk about the, the leak testing, we need to first talk about a water balance. So a water balance is a means to account for all, all water entering and leaving your living system. So yeah, inputs are your inlet and your precipitation. Your outputs are land application water, evaporation, and in the city's case, a little bit of seepage. Now, it's not uncommon for lagoons to seep. It's just the quantity or the volume of seepage is where you can get into some trouble. And so DEQ required the, the leak test, and what that basically does, would you go out with a pan, an evaporation pan, and you, you measured the evaporation from just standing in air and wind. And you measure the, the levels in the lagoon every day at the same time, and then you compare the two at the end and see how different they are. We were able to isolate each lagoon individually. So there was, there was no inputs from the waste, there was no wastewater inputs, and there was no outputs, so that just decreased the, the amount of variables within the equations. And we leaked tested all, it took, we did two weeks for each, each test. We did one and three at one time, and then we did two and three at the same time. And then we repeated, repeated the tests twice. So we ended up going through eight weeks' tests. The results were, weren't bad, but it did show that the living room was seeping some. And and that's kind of where it sits. It was at a, a volume that was, was not concerning at the time of DEQ. But also there's a requirement here that's the groundwater monitoring plan. And that will really be the, the proof of the pudding whether or not the seepage is, is bad enough that it's degrading water quality. And we'll, we'll get into that, but there was a couple of things that, that happened that, that spurred the, the leak test and the groundwater monitoring plan. And that this water balance wasn't balancing. When you put the numbers in, the actual numbers that went in and the actual numbers that were applied, there was a net positive storage in the lagoons. What that means there, by the numbers, there should have been in excess of 23 more million gallons in the lagoons than, than there actually was. And so that can either be attributed to inaccurate flow meter readings. So you monitor the flow going into the lagoons, if that thing's inaccurate, then your water balance is gonna be off. The other thing is we use historic evaporation numbers. And, and those could be underestimated for the actual site itself. And the other variables, it could be, the lagoons could be seeping. The other thing was in 2018, the suction pipe for irrigation pump station broke. And so all, all of 2018, the city didn't land apply at all. And by the numbers, the lagoon should have been overflowing, but that wasn't the case. They were full. But they were overflowing. So it was red flags for DEQ. So we did, did the water, or the leak test, and, and sure enough, our, our evaporation numbers we were using were underestimated, so there was more evaporating than what we were using in our water balance. And it also showed that the lagoon was seeping. So once we input those numbers, then our water balance was bouncing. And we'll get into the groundwater monitoring later. But any questions on that?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
If you look at the wall, the storage volume from April and June, they're the two largest deficits. Do you have any indication why those two are such large deficits?
Right, right here?
Yes, sir.
That's when the city irrigated the most.
Okay.
So here's the volume going out of the lagoons for irrigation.
Okay, so that would be April and June.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's also when you have the most amount of evaporation. Well, not the most, but here's your evaporation numbers. So volume just from evaporation, your greatest evaporation month is July.
However, this year's June would probably top July this year.
Be our summer. And that's the thing with using historic data, it's, it's not always political to be here you're in. But you don't have the funds to sit out there and measure the evaporation. So we'll touch more on water balances when we get into the wastewater improvements. But just wanted to get you guys familiar with some of the terminology and how those are developed. Moving on to the, the sludge survey. So the sludge survey was a requirement. It was obvious that there was a lot of basolids accumulation in the lagoon number one. And that was because when you draw, when the city would draw down the, the lagoons towards the end of the irrigation season, you could just see the accumulation. And apparently he, he wanted to know how much accumulation there was. So what we did was, we got a remote control boat with a high, high accuracy GPS system. It was radio controlled. It had a sonar beam mounted on the bottom of the boat. Drove in a grid throughout the lagoons. And it was, you know, shooting sonar beams down and it was reflecting off the sludge. And then you could download that into CAD and make a surface of the sludge. And then compare that to the original surface and outputs your sludge accumulation. And there's a lot, there's around 52,000 cubic yards of sludge accumulation. Which is not surprising. The Lagoon One has been the, the primary lagoon since its construction in 1979. So yeah, few, few years. And there's no screen, there's no infill screen on Ormond's system. So whatever gets flushed ends up in Lagoon One. So it's full of debris. And honestly, it's, 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 it's one method of biosolids management. A lot of communities spent a lot of time and money and operation to make a cost and managing biosolids with infill screens and presses and, and whatnot, but the sludge has been accumulating in there for 42 years and hasn't cost the city any money. So but now it's, it's to the point where it needs to be addressed. And we'll get into the future upcoming projects. And one of those is dredging or removing the biosols from the lagoon. Yes?
Are these lagoons, is this connected?
Yes.
And what kind of layers are in them?
Good question. So Lagoon One and Two were constructed in 79 and they have six inches of a soil bent knife mixture liner. Lagoon Three, or yeah, Lagoon Three was constructed in 2002 and it is a piece, 30 mil PVC. And then so to protect the PVC, there's a layer of soil and then rip around on top of the soil. So that protects Lagoon Three. And through our leak tests, I guess, just to retract a little bit, Lagoon Three is not leaking at all. But One and Two are showing to be receiving.
Well, and see, you know, you know, all those years, we didn't have to have that permit. And then we did it, and this is what it brings, is all the things he's talking about, so.
Right. The regular, the regular easier.
And so, I, I mean, what we do end up removing the biosolids, and this is another component of the wastewater project, is, is being able to take Lagoon One offline. Because you need, so to treat wastewater lagoons, you need surface area and detention time. Detention time is the amount it takes for water to basically circulate through all the lagoons. And in the lagoon system, you need 120 days. And the, the current surface area for Ormond is adequate for future projections. So there's 42 acres of lagoons and that is, that's an adequate detention time for even the future projections. The other, the other component of lagoon treatment is the amount of loading. So the city tests their wastewater for biological oxygen, oxygen demand. So VO2-5 and TSS, total suspended solids. And the the loading rate for a lagoon system is 30 pounds per acre per day. And again, the city's existing system right now is adequate for treatment from a detention time standpoint and from a loading standpoint. The, the bottleneck in the lagoon system is hydraulic. There is not enough volume hydrologically to contain the projected flows 20 years from now. Couple with that, the biosolids accumulation in Lagoon One is taking up storage. It's also taking up treatment volume. So the lagoons fluctuate between three and seven, three and seven feet. So you have four feet of storage within the lagoons and then the bottom three feet always stays in there. And that's used as treatment. So within the lagoon system, you have your, your treatment volume and then you have storage volume. And you don't account your treatment volume within your storage volume because that storage volume is always fluctuating and you always need the treatment volume. So your treatment volume is adequate for future projections. It's just not, you don't have enough surface area to, hydrologically to meet future demands.
What does that mean?
There's
I don't understand hydraulic. What does that mean?
So the city stores all their wastewater five months. So they irrigate between March and October. From September to February, they store all their wastewater. So there's enough water projected to be going into the lagoons that it will consume all the storage. So
So what we spend between March and September is, is, we can store all of October, February and spend it all in the summer months and not have an issue with that storage. Is that what you're saying?
Right now.
Right now.
Right now, you're okay hydrologically with projected numbers. You wouldn't have enough volume, storage volume in the lagoons to store between September and, and February. So you would get so much info coming in that it would fill up the lagoons past their maximum operating level.
Now I understand hydrology.
Okay. So we need to be able to take Lagoon One offline. And that is an important factor in constructing the other lagoon. And so once, once you go, we'll take Lagoon One offline for a couple of years. And within that timeframe, all the solids will dry up. And they'll come in with equipment and actually just remove it with loaders and dump trucks. The other alternative is to go in and they can wet dredge it. Basically go in and suck out all the sludge. But there's, it's, it's much more, it's about 60% more money to wet dredge than just remove it with equipment. So the city's in a position that they can construct a new lagoon, let the lagoon dry up and remove it with equipment and save around $600,000.
Well, and we were looking at the figures to do this because we looked at dredging. And we could add the new lagoon. I mean, it's cheaper than we could dredge. That, that whole dredging business was astronomically expensive. And so it, this, it was like a no brainer, you add the extra.
So building number, building an extra lagoon will allow us to be able to hold off and do cost management for, for Lagoon Number One. We need to have Lagoon Number Three, we'd be spending $600,000 to get it done.
Yeah, you'd have, you wouldn't have an option.
We wouldn't have that.
Wet dredge it.
Yeah.
And then as we grow, you know, we'll just start using Lagoon One again. And so So how long do you anticipate DQ after, before DQ after the safety?
Well, Lagoon One has acted as your primary cell since 79. So all the solids end up in Lagoon One. And with the time, all the settles, solids settle. And so we didn't, there was no need to, there was not a concern with the accumulation of biosolids in Lagoon Two. And by the time the water gets to Lagoon Two, all the cells, solids have settled out.
Okay, so we have all right, just looking at so that they're both leak, so is there, do we need to address the leak in Lagoon Two?
Well, we'll get to that. And it, it comes down, well, we can stop.
Well, what about when Lagoon Two becomes your primary, if it's one offline?
It's only going to be, so you look at the timeframe, yes, there's going to be solids put in Lagoon Two. But if it's for two years, that's not a lot of solids.
How long until they build three? Four?
Four? Um so we're going to advertise that project in about a month and a half. And construction's planning to start at the beginning of the year. With construction finishing up in probably September.
Oh, okay.
So nine months. For the whole project, that's, that includes Lagoon Four and all the home station improvements.
So you hear from me?
Yeah. Go on, you have a question, dude?
I was going to say, so Lagoon One is the main lagoon.
Yep.
And then it filters into Lagoon Two. So Lagoon Two is basically storage.
And treatment.
It's treated.
It's treated.
And then it goes into Lagoon Three?
Yep.
And then is that what we water Circle 52 with?
Correct.
Okay. So then when we get building the fourth one, then it's just going to go into, so it'll give us three lagoons, basically three lagoons for storage.
And we won't take one off of that four still, so. One won't go offline.
Correct.
Four is done.
Yeah, you need, you need the volume of Lagoon Four in order to get the treatment in the system. And also hydrologically, you need that volume to hold all the water.
Is Lagoon Two the same size as Lagoon One?
They're pretty close to the same size.
So you have, because it's going to have a sludge. It would have enough treatment space.
It does have, so the sludge, there's a misconception between 52,000 cubic yards of sludge and what that actually means. So 90% of that 52,000 cubic yards is water. So your solids content within that sludge is 10% solids, 90% water. But it's still, you know, it's, it's like, it's fun. We're lacking a better term. So there's still water in there, it's 90% water, but that consumes your treatment volume.
But why I'm just saying, you, but Lagoon Two doesn't have that same concern, so you'd have more treatment water space.
Yep. And more treatment volume. And then once Lagoon One is dredged and all the solids removed, you regain, regain that whole treatment volume. So it improves your wastewater treatment. So I'll get into the, so the groundwater monitoring plan. They gave us a year from the permit issues to get that done. And basically there's, there's going to be two upgrading wells. So there's going to be a well on the south side of the lagoons and there's going to be a well on the south side of Circle 52. And so they'll test each one of those wells, the groundwater for different parameters such as nitrates, pH, temperature, et cetera. And then that will set the baseline for the upgrading. And then there'll be three downgrading wells. One below, you know, on the north side of Circle 52. And then two ground, downgrading wells on the lagoon system. So they'll basically take samples in all those lagoons within a one or two day period. Send them off to the lab and then they'll compare the two. And the groundwater monitoring plan identifies the locations of the monitoring wells, how to sample the monitoring wells, the equipment needed. And then identify the sampling and announce the plan. So there's a lot of quality assurance, quality control measures included in there. So that kind of sets the framework of how the city's going to monitor the groundwater upgrading and downgrading of the lagoon system. And that's where the proof comes to putting in whether or not the, the seeping lagoons are degrading water quality. If you're getting nitrates, nitrates are the, the
No, the bad chemical.
Oh, the bad chemical. Yeah, that's indicative of groundwater contaminated by wastewater. So if you're seeing nitrates in your downgrading wells, then DQ's going to step in and say, you gotta, you gotta do something about it. Yeah, well, and the other kind of well, Ormond is in the groundwater management area. The lower municipal basin groundwater, or groundwater monitoring, or
Lagoon One?
Huh?
Lagoon One.
Yeah, there you go. And so they, they look highly at nitrate levels in groundwater. And so it's going to be scrutinized pretty hard by DQ. But it's, it is what it is. You have to, it's, so the, the compliance schedule is we've got to get the groundwater monitoring wells installed and our first sample's taken by the end of the year. And the city's already has a contractor on board to, to do those groundwater monitoring wells installed. And then Anderson Perry will assist with the, the sampling until the city is comfortable taking the samples themselves. The city takes water samples all the time. This just kind of falls under a different, different rules than, than say the wastewater sampling or groundwater water sampling. So that's, that's the plan. And that's, that's being DQ's plans scheduled, so.
So is there anything in the, in the new plan to address the leaking one, it possibly, two, if the next
So it's it's, there's a lot of variables associated with, that's kind of a lot of questions. It's hard to answer what's, what's going to be needed for if anything is needed at all, that's how we can take groundwater service. So the solution to seeping lagerous line then that's just, there's, there's that money. But the ideal time to do that would be when after the dredge or whatever you want. Because it's empty and you can get to the shell of the asshole. Yep. And then
If the line was full, right?
So one scenario would, would be, okay.
Would make sense.
What DQ has, has done in cases, well, I haven't been involved with a case like this, but it just made, what they require is they would give you a mutual agreement or an A and L, which includes a compliance schedule similar to what's in the city permit. And they would give you a date where you have to come up with a plan and then you have to come and basically you, they work with the city and say, okay, to line through the lagoon by some sort of date. But it's all hypothetical at this point. So taking groundwater samples and knowing if it leaks, if it's seeping, it's common occurrence. And I don't want to throw a bunch of that flash because the city lagoons are leaking. That's, it happens all across Oregon and it doesn't degrade water quality. So until you know, you, I don't, I don't want cause a bunch of alarm, until there's something to get warned about. So all right, current projects.
All right, before we go to that, I think maybe we should pause for a break.
Oh, all right.
Hour and a half.
Yeah, you're about right. So if we want to just, you can probably just mute it.
Safety and. A plan to make improvements to improve traffic flow and traffic safety in the area. Uh some of the aspects are outside of the city jurisdiction, including improvements to the off-ramps. Uh realignment of Laurel Lane, Laurel Lane is a counter road. And so what the city is doing in this project is is completing the. Uh plan that they have jurisdiction over, which is attempting to construct a couple of loop roads. Uh and the intent of the loop road is to limit traffic movements. Going into Laurel Lane and coming out of the Laurel Lane onto, or excuse me, coming out of the gates and. Turning onto the gate, so the traffic movements will be limited to a right, right in and a right out on both sides. And then the issue here is limited to site business, distance, there's, you know, this is a hill. So when you're trying to turn left, you have a limited aside and it's a, it's a safety concern. Uh so in order to construct roads, you need right away. Uh the city approached landowners in June of this year and obtained right of dedication. For all the roads except for. With one landlord and I don't want to do the, be the worst, but. The city uh continued negotiations with that landlord until it was time to bid the project. Uh so currently, the, the whole project is designed, but the awarded portion of the project is only the east side. Uh so only the east side sewer and east side road will be constructed under this contract unless. Uh negotiations get better and. There, there is an agreement.
I just got one question.
Yes.
So the Laurel Lane Road is gonna get shut off or shaped open?
It'll stay open.
Okay, so that, the right in and the right out is for truck traffic?
Yes, it's gonna manage traffic circulation in the area.
But Laurel Lane, the hills should still be open?
Yep, that'll still be a through street, but if you wanna turn into Yates going uh west. You can make a right-hand turn, but when you're coming out of Yates going east, you'll only be able to make a right-hand turn. Or you can turn and go around this way and turn left to go down all that way.
So with this new road, when, if I wanna come from the freeway where your arrow is up there, right?
Yeah.
And I come in, I can only take a right off of that road. I can't go to the damage, I have to go all the way around.
If you wanna go to the car block, you have to go around. And entering here, entering here.
And then County Loop, the south side of this, that Devon Loop or County LP, County Loop or Devon Loop?
Yeah.
How, well, is that just up at the very top of the hill, just past like, I don't know, where it lands, places?
Yes, running about where the DPA is now.
On the south side or the north side of the DPA, north side of the DPA, okay.
Oh, so that road's gonna be.
So it's not that far.
Does he have to be up on top of that hill, so you thought?
Yeah, but that's still not far.
Oh, no, it's, it looks far on the map, but when you drive out there, it's.
It's almost nothing, no, it's hardly nothing.
You'll still have people who can play.
Oh, sure.
Especially if I wanna go to Evans as firefighter for the truck, and I have to take that big old loop to go out there.
Well, hey, but the good thing is we're making the turn really wide, so you can take the fire truck up that, down there.
Sixty feet. So then, so the design vehicle for this road project was a, a DPA sixty-seven or. A semi truck with a seventy-seven foot trailer. So there, this, all these roads were designed for semi trucks. Because that's, I mean, you have to design for that vehicle, because that's gonna get a lot of use.
So if we design, so if we're just doing the east side. It won't just be, it'll be both left in and right out. Or do you go up the hill and then around Devon Lake?
You'd still, there, there's a, it's hard to see, but there's a little island right here.
Yeah.
And that will be, there'll be no left turns signs right here. So that will still be in effect, you can right in and right out. So if you wanna go.
Until you do the other side.
No, that'll be in place.
Even?
During this project.
Oh.
And. So there is a request from the landlord out here to close this access. So I guess, when we talk about right away. So the top thirty feet of this road right here was dedicated to the city's right away.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The entrance to the coffee shop right now is within that thirty feet.
That was my next question, I was thinking that that street, that part right there is the entrance to the coffee shop.
It is.
And they don't own the whole entrance.
And, and yes, correct. And so when you say lock up access, does that mean when this project starts, that they'll need to lock that access off?
Well.
Or is that still a contention?
Uh to backtrack a little bit, the county informed the city that. That entrance is illegal in that if you wanna, if you want to. Construct an entrance onto a county road, you have to go through a process, which is submitting uh. An access permit application, and that was kind of done. And so there's. A letter from the county that is directing the city to close that access.
Oh, so we have directed to close that access.
Correct.
So it's not the county that closes it, it will be the city that will be the one that closes it.
Well, and now the city has the jurisdiction to close it because they own the right away.
Okay.
They just think that you can't appeal on. Down here, because the city doesn't have a right away, but.
Cause that was my question, is when, uh about what time of the project does that access get closed? Or do we not close it?
Not at any time.
Okay, we just chose, have chose not to do that, yeah.
Is there any benefit to the city keeping it open?
I have those risks. Because it, I don't know if you've ever tried, tried to make a, a not turn out of that. You're looking back up over your shoulder.
It's the hill.
Because of the hill and the curve.
And so that was the other component of the IDAP is. Straightening out the curve and in, in Laurel Lane and making it more gradual. So your site distance is improved, but that is a county road and that's county's responsibility to take on that project. There would be right-of-way acquisition required, um. And a lot of earthwork, and I mean, it's just another road project. And there's always so much money floating around. Um so. That's outside of the city's jurisdiction. Um, but let's see here.
But the entrance is inside the city's jurisdiction.
It, it, yeah, it's right, as of right now, it's city right away.
Very. It would, Laurel Lane will be closed when we put the sewer up. Because that, there's a sleeve that we've got going, so we're gonna have to close Laurel Lane when we start that for.
Maximum five days.
Exactly.
So, the other component of this project is to give sewer service. Uh we touched on earlier that this, this area was annexed some time ago and they're without sewer service, they have onsite setting systems. Uh the landlords are, are allowed to continue use of their onsite setting systems, but if those systems ever are to fail. Then they are required by DQ to hook up this sewer.
So it probably would be a good idea to block that when we start building with it. If we're gonna build that road, when we start constructing that road, that would make sense to me that that access would be closed. To the tollman's that enters this supposedly to be illegal.
According to the county.
Is there a settlement about that?
You think they never would have gotten a permit and access to it?
It's probably about my favorite, but how do they build, building there?
You're gonna pick?
No, I think, well, it's their property, so I, I don't think what they're building violates their land for that. I just.
But they would have made them up the top of the hill to give them an entrance to that property. They would have never given it to them at the bottom that already turned around that route.
Well, how can the county take that long?
They will, and we're saying, every, everybody is trying to play nice in the sandlots. And it's getting more difficult every day, but it's because we could have went out. For sure, beginning of this year and said, you know what? We've got those big C N things and we're done with you, but that is how life should work. So we're trying to get to a sometime in agreement. Because they know that that will always be a right in, right out, if they don't close it off entirely. So.
They don't stand in territory signatures on the IDAP.
But anyway, so what's wrong?
Um, so talking about the sewer, I mean, we can get into some of the construction needs and methods, so. Like Barry was saying, this intersection, there's gonna be a dam hole right in the middle of this intersection. That's thirteen feet deep, so that whole intersection's gonna get destroyed, it'll be shut down for a maximum of five, of a five-day period. Um to get that installed and get it restored back, back and.
And that's before any construction, yeah.
Well, that'll be. We don't govern the needs and methods of the construction, but they will be doing the sewer first before they do any of the road work.
Correct.
Yeah.
Like, how will you divert the traffic during that time? There's still a lot of similar traffic during, in that area.
The contractor will work with ODOT to put traffic control, so. Between the contractor and ODOT, how they want to control that intersection.
Okay.
What about the business owners there? Are the, so the contractor, contractor work with the business owners?
So we, we did place a requirement within the contract that before they shut this down. They have to get the rough earthwork done and gravel, basically make a gravel road right here.
Mm-hmm.
And so that'll be accessible for local traffic and people that wanna go to the car block. So they'll maintain access to their.
And we're talking five days of minimal time.
Yep. So communication to the public will be good, um the contractor will work with ODOT. In order, before they even start, they gotta submit a traffic control plan. And so that will be approved by ODOT, who'll come through us and get approved by us. And so what we'll do during construction is we have control over that traffic control plan and make sure that they're adhering to it. And so that's, that's where our control, that's what we can do, is just make sure that they adhere to the approved track control plan.
Gotcha.
Uh so. Talking about construction, they're going to start construction by the beginning of twenty twenty-two. Um I said it already, awarded the project, but. Procurement of materials is difficult nowadays, and the sewer pipe is one of those that has long designs. And so their sewer pipes, well, not just the sewer pipe, all the fittings, manholes, et cetera. Um they'll have everything they need so they can mobilize to job site and continue working. And so that's why they're starting in the beginning of twenty twenty-two, um so they'll come in, do all the sewer. Do all the rubbering and the earthwork, get it correct for paving, and then asphalt plants open in April. And so as soon as asphalt plants are open, then we'll be paving this thing.
What is, uh, do they have a date, has the company issued a, a start date as far as breaking ground for the, the road, which is Devon Loop?
We haven't obtained a schedule yet, so we have.
When I say, when I hear uh beginning in twenty twenty-two, I just wonder, you know?
I, I don't know uh what their schedule will look like. So as an engineer, we don't govern the needs and methods of construction. Uh that's outside of our jurisdiction as an engineer. Um and so what we, what, what we'll do when we start this project, that they have, is have a pre-construction meeting. And they'll provide us with a, a general schedule and, and timeline associated with.
So that's kind of on the pre-construction.
Correct, yes.
Gotcha.
Oh my god, for Laurel Lane.
That's actually really good, it's the first time I've actually understood what's gonna happen there, cause I've got a picture. Trying to explain what's going on, uh. So, yeah, that's, that's exciting. I'm excited to be said that, I didn't care less about the county side, I'm sorry. That's my two cents.
Moving on, uh, okay, so wastewater project. Um, we are under agency, uh, under agency review. Uh what that means to me, we're at a hundred percent design stage on the wastewater project. Then we submitted the design to uh both DQ and OWRD. And you might ask, why is OWRD involved? So OWRD, Oregon Department of Resources Department?
Thank you. Doesn't get a hold of the topic.
Sorry. You did that. Um OWRD, they uh have the jurisdiction over dams in Oregon. And the Blue Forest is considered a dam uh according to the, the Oregon administrative rules. So a dam is anything with a di height above ten feet elevation or contains more than three million gallons. So our.
Has it been a verb behind it?
Uh our peak di height is seventeen feet. Um and the reason for that is to maintain the same water surface elevation as the other lagoons. So it works well hydraulically with everything, and then just as a natural topography of that lot that the city purchased. It's got a hole in it, so um that constitutes a dam. If we could have kept it under ten feet, then OWRD wouldn't be involved. But, so we, we're, we're playing by two sets of rules, we have to follow the dam safety uh construction guidelines through OWRD. And that involves submitting a dam safety report to OWRD. Um the dam safety report includes a breach analysis. Um what a breach analysis is, it's a two-day, two-day flow modeling. Um of what would happen if the dam were to breach. And then from that breach analysis, they assign us a hazard rating. So the uh, but the breach analysis showed that um depending on where it's breached, we breached it in three locations. Two locations, nothing was harmed, and it didn't even overtop the railroad, which is good. Uh but a third breach analysis, uh which is near PK Substation. So the PK Substation is inundated and it goes down to, uh to the factory. Um so. I would like to just caveat that, say. I don't wanna say a breach will never happen, but um it is very, very, very unlikely that this thing will ever breach. But we, again, are checking boxes for regulatory requirements. Um so the hazard rating for the Blue Forest is a significant hazard. And the significance of that is basically that OWRD is gonna come out every three years and inspect, inspect your dam. Inter- interestingly enough, Lagoon Three, there exists a Lagoon Three is also a dam. Um its hazard rating is uh low, low hazard, um but due to the breach analysis that we provided for. Lagoon Four, they're gonna up that hazard rating into a significant hazard.
The verb behind it.
Huh?
The verb behind it.
Um again, it's not, it's just explained by the rules, um. It's total cheese with the PK Subfactory generally, um. The chances are very, very, very slim, I don't like to say never, but. Um so that's kind of the parameters of the, the, the dam safety report, um.
That'd be, well. Times ago, he said it, and I was like, no, it's a trigger right here, all that.
Wow.
Oh, I did. Um, so the, the wastewater project, it consists of constructing the Blue Forest. Um and to talk about Blue Forest, I mean, here's a, a few pictures of what this is gonna look like.
Is Blue Forest working?
Yeah, yeah, it is. Yeah, it'll be the requirements uh being, as being considered that they are. So there's gonna be a, this will be connected, there'll be pipes installed, so you can. Pull water, not pull water, but the water will drain out of Lagoon Three and go to the Blue Forest. And then the outlet is right here, and that'll be connected to the irrigation pump station. So the flow path, when everything is said and done, you'll be irrigating out of the Blue Forest.
Is that Circle Fifty-two?
No. Circle Fifty-two is to the east.
Yeah, well, I know about where the end button is in the corner.
You may or may not know this, I know Chief does, but this was the site of the old gun range. Yes, it was. Um so we will be burying. The gun range.
Shells off.
Uh well, we're mitigating all the lead and shells and we're moving, relocating. All the lead, contaminated soil and isolating that, so it's, it's.
You don't want that to come back any later.
Exactly. Oh, but. Uh, here's the grading of the new lagoon, uh, I don't know if I should look down here. But one thing I wanna touch on, we were talking about water balances. Um and so within the wastewater facilities plan, there was two water balances developed. The first one is with seepage. And so these are twenty forty-two water balances, so these are your proj- projected flows over here. Uh precipitation is the same, because it's just our precipitation values. Evaporation, we adjusted evaporation rates according to the lagoon leak tests. Um to make those match the site better, um and then these are the seepage rates, which we. Obtained from the leakage test. So what this comes up with is your design criteria or the, the volume needed for your lagoon, so. With seepage, you need a proposed lagoon volume of twelve point four million gallons. And the one we're constructing is twenty seven point seven. So if you look, so we, we get another water balance, um projected water balance without seepage. So under this scenario. You need a proposed lagoon volume of thirty four point one million gallons. Okay, and now I'll show you a third lagoon, so there's no concern here, or excuse me, a third water balance. So same influence precipitation, evaporation, seepage is zero, we're assuming zero seepage. Um proposed volume of twenty seven point seven million gallons. Um and the important thing here to look at is the volume from the lagoons right here. This is how much you guys are gonna irrigate each year. And this is the gross irrigation requirement for Circle Fifty-two. The, the gross irrigation requirement is how much water you can apply on a pro, per home. So there's a deficit between the two numbers.
Seepage is.
Approximately thirty million gallons. So there, this, this, this is the, the buffer that I was talking about. So even if your influence values were increased thirty million gallons, you would still be able to operate the lagoon system. And land and apply everything on Circle Fifty-two.
So the thirty million gallons probably equates to.
The size of the Blue Forest. The new lagoon, so the new lagoon will have a volume of twenty seven point seven million gallons.
Okay.
So.
And people wise, that would be.
Um. So it's about. So four liters gallon per capita per day flow rate is around seven, seventy gallons per capita for, per day. Um so. It depends on your population projection, because what we do to come up with a flow value is multiplied by your.
Preoccupation or whatever.
So, I, I could figure it out, but it probably takes me a couple of minutes.
Oh, that would be time, yeah.
But I guess the point of this, you guys have some buffer within the lagoon system. And it's all legit, so if it doesn't look like we're building um. An exorbitantly large lagoon system. Uh this meets the projection guidelines as per DQ. But if the city were, were to grow at a three percent organic growth rate, there's some buffer included within the design. To accommodate for that growth. Sneaky engineering, that is. Not really sneaky, because it's all numbers, but anyway. Um, the other components of the wastewater project is updating the lift stations, we've got three primary lift stations. Lift station one serves the south side of town, uh all lift stations, all water from one goes to two. Two also serves by gravity the uh west side of town. And then everything from two is pumped to three. And three serves the, uh, the domestic sewage needs of the quarter mile, high school, um apartments, et cetera. Um. The, let's see here, the piping configurations are, are being changed, and when I say that. The current pumps right now, you have, this is the new improvements, uh but right now you got two pumps. They're, they're vertical suction prime pumps. And at, when they were installed, uh they were stated yard, but there's a lot of problems associated with them. Uh because you have to prime the suction pipe with a vacuum system. And uh it's, it can be very problematic, if you get an air leak somewhere, the pipe will prime, um. But current industry standard is to install submersible pumps. And you know, all the motor cooling is done by the sewage. Um, there's, there's no priming necessary, the things just turn on and pump. So the other thing will be updating all the electrical controls. Um so everything will be current industry standards, um. Yeah, they're basically, the lift stations are basically getting gutted and rebuilt, except for the shell built themselves. The exterior will be painted, the interior is remainted, so they'll be smoother dimensions. And, oh, I didn't have a picture, this is the letter existing booster pump station. Any questions on the wastewater project?
So I, if I'm reading this correctly, it's gonna cost us seven point six million to complete this?
Uh, I think you're on the wrong line, or I don't. So we're on the third line item, Devon, Devon SI, three minutes. The big one?
He's looking at the line we put up in the packet, and it says, Devon SI, which is waste, waste.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where are you going? And we budgeted this amount?
Yeah, we won. Our, our one twenty, wasn't it? Wasn't it one twenty? Yes, but it's eighteen for construction. And you're receiving a pretty nice little industry.
Okay, so moving on, any other question on the wastewater project? Uh, we go on to the water project. And, uh, an important thing to talk about the water project at first is, um, the location of the water system. I mean, when I say that, it's the collectible walls, the booster pump station reservoir. That's all located on Army Corps of Engineers property. And that property is leased to the city, uh, so the, the city signed an agreement with the Army Corps back in nineteen seventy something, when the original systems was built. And that included easements for each one of the, all three of the collectible walls, and they exist in the booster pump station site. This project entails constructing a new booster pump station on three acres directly west of the existing site. And that's where the new million gallon reservoir will be constructed. And so, that required a new lease with Army Corps of Engineers. And on top of that, the lease agreements between the city and Army Corps have expired and need to be updated. And so, the Army Corps required the city to complete an environmental assessment of the sites where the improvements were to be made. The environmental assessment is basically, so it follows the EPA guidelines, National, EPA stands for, National Environmental Policy Act requirements. And that looks at everything environmental from, all systems involved. Floodplains, wetlands, aquatic resources, fish, wildlife, habitat, threatened and endangered species, historic properties, cultural resources, and water quality. So, the environmental assessment looks at all those and deciphers whether or not the proposed improvements will impact any of those. Couple things to note, there were environmental assessments done in two thousand prior to the collectible wall number two, and nothing was found. The quarter mile did an environmental assessment in two thousand fourteen in the same area, and nothing's found. And so, we argued with Army Corps of Engineers and basically said, what do you think you're going to find that you haven't already analyzed? And their response was, well, the policies have changed, so you have to do an environmental assessment. So, okay. Um, about a year ago, we were ready to advertise for construction in collectible wall number three. And that's when the Army Corps stepped in and said, timeout, you gotta do this environmental assessment. Said, okay, well, let's get it done, and, um, as part of the timeframe, they're anticipating publishing an environmental assessment for public comments in October. So, it's taken almost a year to get through this environmental assessment. It is what it is. Uh, we are ready and prepared. We're actually gonna advertise the collectible wall project in anticipation that, uh, the city will receive the findings of the noted negative impact from the environmental assessment results. And the, uh, we anticipate starting construction on collectible wall number three as soon as so, uh, that moves us into the, the booster pump station and million gallon reservoir project. And we're at a three percent design stage with that. The components, and so, the kind of guts of the booster pump station, it will be capable of pumping twenty thousand gallons per minute. And so, the city will be able to prove up and certify their full water rate with the new booster pump station. Uh, the million gallon storage reservoir is also necessary, uh, from a water quality standpoint, because, uh, the way the city disinfects the water, the only water treatment they have to use is dose of chlorine. And in order for the chlorine to be effective, it has to have contact time with the water. Um, and you can imagine that at a rate, at twenty thousand gallons per minute, you're gonna be flowing through your storage quickly. So, the, the million gallon reservoir gives you the contact time to disinfect the water according to state standards. Uh, the collectible well will have a similar capacity to one and two. And, and that's to maintain high water quality, so you can also just maintain the same disinfection requirements, which is chlorine. If you pump the collectible wells at more they're, they're, they can handle a lot more water, but the water quality degrades and you start getting particulates within the water, which requires a lot, uh, more extensive treatment, so. Um, also, you only have thirty six CFS. And with each collectible well pumping to six thousand gallons per minute, you're meeting your, your water rate, so. That's, uh, that's all I got on the water list. It's all coming together very nicely, in my opinion. But, uh, scheduling wise, it's gonna take a couple of years to get the water project done. Uh, we anticipate bidding and awarding the, the booster pump station projects in, say, like, April twenty twenty two. And rounding that up in late summer of twenty twenty three.
Is that it? That's for your, that's your presentation, or you got more?
Well, we were gonna talk about some upcoming, like, those are, I would consider my current projects.
Yeah.
Uh, there's some upcoming projects that we can breeze through. Uh, one of them being the, the city hall versus generator.
That's the one that's driving me nuts. Why don't we just buy it? Why don't we just get it done? I, I, I mean, does, don't we have money? Like, how is the building budget to pay for it?
Well.
It's for a building, it's for a building, and the whole city, the building, yeah. I'm talking to her, excuse me, but, uh, that, that's my frustration part is we can't find a place to, to buy the generator. I, I don't know, I, maybe I misunderstood about if the building fund is for buildings for, you're telling me, you're telling me that, I don't mean to be agitated, but, I might sound agitated, but I'm not. You're telling me that there's not a creative way to build a, a add-on with a generator that meets into the criteria of a building fund?
We can, we can figure out how to buy a generator. We just want you to know that we need that. Because I, but the next thing on the list is the slash, oh, the loom's slash rule. We always do that.
We have, excuse me, I'm sorry, we have a date on how we wanna do that, because I don't wanna talk to you about for since seven, eight months.
For the generator?
Yeah.
I think, to be honest, I think at any of the time, we sit down and order a generator, it's just about anything that boils down.
Yes.
I have some, been, uh, the, uh, beneficial. So, the city has out right now a request, a proposal for an integrator of record. And that's a fancy word for electrician. Um, it, it's more involved than that, because it's tied to the water wastewater project and the control and instrumentation. On that, and updating the city's data systems to provide your control and that acquisition system. But the person that is awarded that, that contract will have the capability to size the generator and design the connection to the existing building. And then, maybe that happens, so.
I think my biggest hangup is, I haven't gotten used to how slow the city is.
Oh, my gosh.
And it drives me up to the frick of the wall. I'm like, okay, you need a city hall generator, yeah, let's get it done. That, that's, that's my thought. I'm used to like, okay, who's gonna order, who's gonna get it, and that, that's my thought process. I know there's a lot of other paperwork and other things, but that's what just drives me absolutely bonkers, is maybe it's red tape or whatever it is. I'm like, I, I just see a budget, and I'm like, dude, let's, let's try and, might as well get it done. And that, that's my thought, and so that's where my questions gets in the way, uh, my thought process.
The, so there's, it's, it's tough, the, you know, you have to abide by a perimeter rule in a municipality. And if contract values exceed a hundred thousand dollars, then you have to publicly bid, um, et cetera, et cetera, where the city, by identifying an integrator of record, the city can work directly with that electrician and direct hire them to do the work. Because they have been competitively selected to do that work.
So, we pay one?
And not necessarily.
Not necessarily?
No. Um, the reason for, for getting an integrator of record or an engineer of record is the management areas in the city's engineer record for, since, like, ninety seven.
Yeah, since I've, ever, accident I've ever been on since twenty twenty.
And so, the intent there is to build trust with
or to the nineteen, the two thousand, two thousand, sorry.
So, you build a relationship with somebody that you trust. And it makes it a lot easier on the tail end of getting many things happened.
Okay.
And, and you can expedite, uh, designs and construction in that area, so.
Perfect. That enters my position. I'm sad, sorry.
We're working on it.
Thank you.
Um, so the rule, we, we kinda talked about that, and it's gotta happen after the wastewater project is complete. Um, probably have a northeast waterline replacement. Um, there, that waterline is an assessed concrete waterline. There's actually a couple of install, a four inch and a six inch in there, continually breaking. Um, so this project is looking at replacing the waterline and provided a couple of cost estimates. Uh, one is just replacing the waterline and doing the surface restoration. Uh, patching asphalt trench, but the road is non-caterated condition, condition, and so we provided a second cost estimate for replacing the waterline and then doing the overlay. The first is five hundred and forty thousand dollars for just the waterline replacement, restoration. The second is eight hundred and thirty five thousand dollars, and that's inclusive of waterline replacement and the overlay.
So, loom four for this project?
No.
Well, no.
The five hundred and forty thousand dollar project cost is for replacing the waterline and restoring an asphalt surface.
You know, just hatching, like, the trench.
And then, the alternative is replacing the waterline and then overlaying the entire street.
Oh, so eight hundred thousand to redo the whole there?
Yeah, to do it right.
Yeah.
And by the way, this is the same when we did, uh, what we called down the loop on, on Bourbon Avenue going down that southern side of the loop. That, that's what we spent, we spent about eight hundred something thousand doing that side, so. I was pretty pleased with them saying that we could do the Bourbon Avenue side.
So, when we say north, northeast, this is past, huh?
This is front of your house.
No, 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 well.
Oh, well, I'm.
You're, you're, it's on the other side, is it? So, it's on the other side, is it past the part that you just, that we just did last year or before?
No, he's got the wrong letter on the northwest.
This should be northwest, so this is the part that goes on, okay.
Yeah.
So, where are we done last time?
The project started with the, um, well, our old mainstream whenever.
You know, the former loop, the old pass. Starting last one. Oh, you're talking about the, the, the trap, okay.
Oh, park before those, that, that park.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It has to be the main road. Yeah, okay, you're talking, okay, I, I don't, the, the whole pass that went over the train tracks.
So, that's where the project started, and the project ended, it would tie into where the the boat, or the loop.
Oh, the loop on that end?
Now, I, I see it, it's very important. You're trying to use it to get around, take a little longer than that.
And even that was to replace the road, that whole stretch.
Long blocks.
Well, I mean, but, yes, and, 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 I, and I think that's true.
That's, that's for, it's not a full road reconstruction, it's a whole leg.
Oh, because you're digging in the middle of it?
Yeah. You can still, you basically put asphalt over the existing asphalt.
So, what kind of, uh, gap would you over?
Uh, typically, you'll go with like a three inches of the center and a taper down. You can gain some, uh, strength personal. So, real tight, or, real quickly, I'll give you the plan updates. The city last updated, well, a CIP, a CIP, the plan, provides a framework for implementing constructor rules. It's a plan to the future. Uh, it identifies cost estimates, uh, funding mechanisms, allocating budget. So, typically, you do one for like a five-year period, and then update it periodically as you complete projects. As priorities change, and so it also provides the council, uh, a chance to have input on projects and and such, so looking at updating that and planning projects. And it's good mechanism to communicate to the public what your intentions are for future projects. And if you plan, you can publish it on the website, so you can be able to, with a catalog, do a plan. And it just sets a framework. There's not a guess to what you're doing next year for projects, or you know, for the next five years. Are you identified funding? So. The last three road projects, uh, southeast and southwest, uh, Buck Street. This is the front street there. Yeah, that's, okay, so that's right over here. And the intent of that project, uh, the city completed an interchange area management plan, identifying new roads to be constructed on the south side, uh, to improve traffic flow, through developments. So, working on that, various submitted that project for next CED grants. There's hurdles to jump through, and that roads will be going east, 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 parallel. So, that's another you can see with, with your, your project. Uh, and it's a large managing project as well. It's a lot of roads that it can go in, so you, you go to construction and then also improving, uh, truck parking when you get off the freeway. Or limiting truck parking altogether. There's, there's a couple of options there, how you wanna have to manage the police, truck park in the area, and also people getting off the freeway, you know, mobility to, to, to.
Because we have, we've, we've got a plan for the loop road, right? But we don't have to build the whole loop road at one time, can we? But we don't have to build the whole loop road at one time every week.
That'll basically, but. We tend on more of the, the, the.
And some mean treatment, that's where, where the improvement stopped. So that project was submitted for ODOT funding through their city program. For recitals and never received any money. So it's been a shell. Again, that's a pretty large magnitude project. Add a third lane from where the improvement is ending all the way down to Wilson. Turnbys and sidewalks, beautification on.
That's this one right here, right?
Yeah.
If they add the third lane, should they not also widen the overpass?
That's what I'm, your situation.
Right. That's what I'm saying though. Right now, you get off and you want to turn south. You've got to sneak out into the live lane of the traffic so you can see clearance to make the turn. That is a safe path.
I know that ODOT is aware of the city hazards and it's identified an interchange area management plan. But if you're looking at larger magnitude projects, large federal projects. And where that fits in priorities.
I don't know if Oregon is, who wants to be there? But yes, but we, somehow. That needs to be addressed for our city. It is a concern. It's just how we get, make ODOT want to put that on their, this, this to do.
We have three lanes north of the intersection. We're talking about three lanes south of the intersection, the overpass. And you got a two-lane, three-lane over there to the tunnel. That's a toll lane. A safety gap.
So basically, what it boils down to, ODOT has to be the one responsible for carrying a foot pressure on both. Local legislators and federal legislators asking.
That is all on that here.
I got that in mind. Last problem is for east. That's from the flat cap. That road asphalt, pretty bad shape. You know, doing some boosters there to the role of that. Either I can look at it in depth, but you know, either Chipper Seal or. Chipper Seal, we're saying, you know.
Chipper Seal's out for about, for about seven streets on. We've got places, we've got problems with the base. You can see it now the pavement's taped. And so that's going to be pretty much full on the construction. We'll get on. We'll make it a lot longer.
You did see we took the problems and.
Did we? Did we put it up?
Well.
Yes and no, maybe. It'd probably be easier taking down a bit.
Thank you so much. Everyone on the top here starts, I don't even know a lot of this, but I appreciate going through the suite and the detail and taking the time to answer all of our questions.
Yeah. It was a lot of preparation to try and keep it at eye level with a good lease. I'm sorry I took it so long, but.
I, I, I see it very well. I mean, this is a lot of years and a lot of move leases. And I felt like it was sunrise and delivered to me in a way that not completely. I, I, I retained a lot of management as we were looking through like where we're going and about the land.
Yeah, we came from us.
I just listened. I felt like I was just receiving so much.
Yeah, you were in on that.
We're all, we're all going to see it in a week, I guess.
It's, it's understandable. It's a lot of stuff, yeah.
Does anybody else have any, do we have? Oh, there. You're, you have something to say. No, that's, that's great. Yes.
I just want to make sure you all understood that it's inherently that you meet here on the next city council meeting.
I'm gone.
No, you can't meet. And if you are, you have to phone in. I'll give you the time and go ask the board.
I have, I have a calendar that I'll be here, maybe. As long as you don't change to another date.
No, we will not change the fifth. It's like a drop dead day and we have an urgent student meeting. And we can have an urgent student meeting if. Did it mean we passed out to stuff tonight? No, it's going to be, I'll have to be able to go over, go through. Oh, I just thought it was workshop.
All right. I, I was just wondering, are we ready? Are we very, very ready to close this workshop? And you're about to close this workshop.